I'd like to bring the Bellingham City Council Committee meetings back to order. Our final committee is Committee of the Whole. We have three items scheduled to discuss, and then we've added an executive session at the end of the meeting. Our first item is our annual hearing examiner report to the council, or semi-annual, semi-annual hearing examiner's report to the council. The hearing examiner presents a report to the city council, and the 2016 report summarizes the cases decided, highlights the issues raised in the course of applications considered, and offers recommendations regarding those issues, and reports on other work performed by the hearing examiner. We have before us our contract hearing examiner. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Rice, for those who haven't met me before. Actually, we did, you did effectuate the change to make the annual report annual rather than semi-annual last year, and that was at my request, and I thank you so very much. It was very gracious of you. I would be happy to go through my report, or I don't know if you prefer that I do that, or if you would like to just ask questions about the issues I raised. I had six suggestions about your code, and I, some were very minor, and some were just things to bring to your attention. And I also explained at the beginning here why your 2016 report is being delivered in January 2017, and let you know that the 2017 report is now, should already be on the calendar for October, so. Should I dive into what I think is interesting, or do you want to ask questions?
Counsel?
Okay.
Yeah, maybe you go over it briefly then, please.
I can, I can barely hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm being facetious, as always. You don't have any bad news, I'd like to hear what you've done.
Yeah, I really, I really don't have bad news. Everything worked very well this year.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's enough for me.
I just want to quickly bring your attention. I know that nationally Airbnb is a very hot issue. We had one interesting Airbnb case this last year. Conditional use permit was requested and denied, and the reason this conditional use permit was denied is because the legally non-conforming property had a residence on the boundary. And staff's recommendation to mitigate with landscaping between the two, the residences were five feet away, the adjacent residents had a five-foot setback. So staff, when, when the application was submitted, it showed a three-foot setback, and staffs had planted some trees there. It wasn't possible for them to mitigate their own impacts on their own property, and there was a history of tremendous impacts. I felt, I was, I felt the testimony by impact was very credible. Because they couldn't mitigate on their property, I denied their application. That's a rare circumstance, but there aren't that many legally non-conforming residences that are going to be, request Airbnb approval, but I did have a lot of testimony from nearby rather than just adjacent neighbors of significant impacts, and it's entirely possible that I will again conclude that an Airbnb has to be denied because the impacts can't, well that a BNB CUP has to be denied because the impacts can't be mitigated onsite. And I just wanted to bring that strange application to your attention. I know Airbnb is a hot issue everywhere, and I think that the planning department is working on that, or is waiting for some other cases, national cases, to get to the resolution stage, and they're going to be bringing forward some information, some suggestions to you on that. It's, that's probably the hot ticket item out there.
Yeah, I know that our own staff has looked into it, and our planning staff is also looking into that issue.
It's, it's very big all over the state, I think, everywhere that they're happening. It's, it's, it's a discussion, a public discussion. Other issues, as usual, I'm kind of scraping the bucket to make recommendations, because things are already so functional that it's not, nothing here is very dramatic. That's, that's, sorry, I'm doing what I can to make useful suggestions. The, the one I feel most strongly about is my second suggestion. Your code expressly requires a conditional use to, the applicant must demonstrate that their conditional use promotes the public's health, safety, and welfare. And as you can imagine, any opponent can come up with a list of reasons how this doesn't. It's, I, I feel as a decision maker that promote belongs in long-term planning, it's, it's a very subjective goal. It's difficult to objectively demonstrate compliance with promoting, whereas other cities and counties that use, that have conditional use permits, they require them not to harm the public interest. That harm of public interest is easier for an opponent to demonstrate, and it's easier for an applicant to defend against. I just, I provided you with some samples of other codes, something for your consideration. It hasn't been a major obstacle, there's been no fireworks about it, except for the one case, it was the, a couple of years ago, I've already reported on it, the guest house, the residential house, gosh, I can't remember the name of the case, but it was a big case, and the attorney for the neighbors who were opposing it was very concerned about it, the fact that they didn't demonstrate they promoted the public interest. So, I just bring that to your attention, it's one way you differ from other codes. It's fine for Bellingham to be unique, I think it's inevitable for Bellingham to be unique, and that's a good thing, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Your developers are being held to a different standard than, than other developers in other communities are. Wanted to offer that for your consideration. I did have one suggestion that would reduce my work here. We have the street standard variance that's decided by the hearing examiner. Whether a street standard variance is still going to protect public interest is really a decision that's best made by the Public Works Department, and so I recommend that that be made, an administrative decision with an appeal. Everybody's interests are protected, you'd get smaller bills from me. I, I feel like that would still be adequate process. We had the one impound case this last reporting period where I granted the appeal, and it was because the appellant presented credible testimony that the sign wasn't there when he parked his car at 7:30 PM the night before the event, and there was no way for, there was nobody who appeared on behalf of the police department, and no evidence in the record to contend. It would be impossible for the officer who issued a ticket to provide that evidence anyway, and so my suggestion to you, which kind of seems like it's related to the previous discussion, was that you make event coordinators affirmatively prove with photographic evidence that they posted the signs at the time they were supposed to. And then you have them appear at hearing, or, I, I'm just thinking out, I don't know, I don't know what the appropriate process is, but the city is liable, the city had to pay those impound fees, and that was really the event coordinator's error, if my facts are correct, if, you know, if I found correctly, so. To save the city the costs, I would just recommend you add an extra layer, and like I said, I'm scraping the barrel here. I, I am sure impound cases doesn't appear on the top 200 list of important issues for your consideration. The other weird thing that happened that is a cost consideration was the one docket I had where all three items got removed from the docket, one of which while I was driving here. I did invoice the city for my time preparing for the docket, so you incurred that cost, that applicant didn't incur that cost. I don't know if, I don't know if you care to address that in a fee schedule in any way, if they should be on the hook somehow for late withdrawals. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Okay.
Did they cancel?
The applicant withdrew their application the day of the hearing, and I found out about it while I was driving here.
Councilmember Barker?
How many times in the time you work for the city has that happened?
This is probably the first time that that's happened. So again, scraping the barrel here, just wanted you to know, it was a strange thing that happened. It might be something, it's actually, it's not a code change probably, it's a policy, a practice has changed in the planning department.
Councilmember Vargas?
Sharon, I just wanted to thank you for your comments and suggestions in here. These are really helpful, because you're seeing these cases and these examples, and so I, I appreciate you sharing this information with us. Thank you.
Great. I'm welcome to, or I'm happy to hear any feedback from the city council anytime on my, on the service that I provide, and please let me know if there's any way I can be of better assistance to the city. Anything else?
Well, I would like to say that in your defense, I don't think you were scraping too far to the bottom of the barrel. I'm actually interested in two of the ones that you highlighted. Couple of years ago, we changed our rezoning criteria. It had also weird vague language on public health and safety. The code was "had to be related to," and that provided no direction. So I'm actually interested in asking the planning staff maybe to chew on that recommendation and come forward at a later date. And the other one I thought that was worth the staff chewing on against Public Works is, as you say, make some of these street variances administrative decisions appealable to you as a hearing examiner. So I'm wondering if the council is interested in having those various staff look at those issues and then come back at a later date? Okay. Is that sufficient direction, Kelly?
That's great.
Great. Someone else have their hand up on this? Nope.
You didn't get, did you get to F?
I didn't. There was one other minor issue that I find very curious. In your impact, I'm sorry, in your SEPA appeal code, it explicitly says that appeals under this title are limited to appeals of a determination of significance, which requires an EIS, appeals of a mitigated determination of significance, or, and that no other SEPA appeals are allowed, and that excludes the most common SEPA threshold determination, which is the determination of nonsignificance. I'm not clear on what the public interest or the benefit is in not providing an appeal on that one type of SEPA threshold determination. I quickly, before the meeting today, spoke with Alan Mariner, and he says he's not sure that's not intentional. It might, there might have been a reason why it was excluded, but I've never seen that anywhere. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It seemed to me it was missing. If it's not missing, that's useful information, but I, it's just odd.
Okay, thank you. So Alan, you'll look into that?
Well, I, I, that was intentionally drafted that way. Marilyn Vogel drafted, I believe drafted that code. I can't tell you the policy reasons behind that, but it wasn't, it wasn't an admission in error. And it's always, I can find out and I can, I can report back.
It would be nice to have that report back. I don't know if it has to be, it can be in writing, I suppose.
I, I, how about a group email to council?
Yep, that looks okay with us.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Sharon, any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. See you in October.
Okay. We'll go on to our next item, which is a discussion of an independent salary commission. The council asked staff to draft an ordinance creating an independent salary commission which would establish the salaries of elected officials. That includes the council, the mayor, and the municipal court judge. We have in our packet attached memorandum written a while ago providing background and current information from the Bellingham Charter and code provisions related to salaries, the proposed ordinance which is attached, and the anticipated work of the commission. Council voted to postpone third and final reading of the ordinance until the second meeting in January 2017, which is this meeting, and to hold the Committee of the Whole meeting to discuss the matter further, which is this meeting right here, right now. Council members? Peter, would you like to give us a summary first?
Yeah, since it's been a few months, I thought it might be helpful, and what I would do is just really briefly refer to the, it's a memo that's in the packet, it's dated June 14th, 2016, and in terms of what the ordinance does, it will, by setting up the commission, this ordinance and the commission, and the decisions of the commission would supersede a number of code provisions that relate to salaries of elected officials, including the provision that states what the salary of the mayor would be in terms of an increase, including the increase for council salary, which is to increase annually by 3%, as well as provisions relating to the salary of the municipal court judge. And then the highlights of the actual commission, just in terms of review and update, since it's been a few months, this would be a seven-member commission. It would not be a standing commission, it would be formed at periodic intervals. I believe it's every four years, if I'm not mistaken, starting in 2017, at least as it's currently written. And then the idea would be that this commission would complete its work within a fairly short period of time, 180 days with some option for renewal. Any change that the, the commission determined, which would be final and determinative, it's not a recommendation, would be effective in the next calendar year's budget. And I think those are the highlights. I can try to answer any questions if there's anything beyond that.
April Barker?
So, I think I was the one to move that we waited until the beginning of the year. This came up, and, and we had voted it through two, we were at third and final, I think, at the final, and, and I had done a little bit more research and needed more time to think about this. And in doing that, I absolutely think we need to look at salaries, but I don't feel like we need to do it through a salary commission. I think, one, it's going to be a great education if we as council were to take this on for the community, to really recognize what it is that our elected officials do and are expected to do. I, I think it's also important to know that a salary commission, although they be independent, they, they're not going to be looking at our budgetary concerns, and we do have budgetary concerns. So I think that's something that us as a council body, if we were to do this work on our own, we could determine if there was a need to increase, we could stagger that, we could do that in many different ways. I think it's possible we could still utilize a committee if we wanted to form one, as far as just looking specifically at our salary to come back to us and looking at similar councils that are set up similar ways, if that's a concern for the public. And therefore, I will certainly not be voting for this, but I would then, if, if I'm able to move that we refer this to committee and start the work right away as to determining what the salary schedules should be for all electeds.
I'll second it for discussion purposes on our, what committee are you thinking of? Finance committee?
The motion would be to move it to finance committee.
So a little point of information, so this is in third and final, and any vote which would normally occur would occur this evening. So how do we treat Councilmember Barker's motion this afternoon?
Yeah, as the mayor just pointed out, so everything you discuss in the afternoon is in the way of a recommendation for this evening. Lining Roberts' rules up with our regular council process is sometimes a challenge, because we have a first and second, we have a process whereby ordinances come on first and second, and they're just automatically placed before council, third and final, but there is a motion in the evening to move an ordinance, third and final. So you still do have that aspect of Roberts' rules. So, so you have, you have different options. You can, it's really, I don't, I don't think it's best to leave an ordinance just out there after first and second, but I suppose that's an option. You can table it, which means that then it would have to be taken up affirmatively at some point. You can, you can reject it on third and final, so you have all those options available to you.
But to interpret your motion this afternoon, you would recommend that tonight we make this referral action.
Yeah, what I was saying is that if, if we do decide to reject the third and final, that I would then be bringing this motion forward and hoping for support. It would be moving to the finance committee.
I'll recognize, first Pinky Vargas, and then Jean.
I was actually thinking, very similar thoughts to what you were, Councilmember Barker. I've gone back and forth on this, I know people are probably concerned, well, should we be looking at our own salaries? But I actually think we should. We look at the budget, we're the ones who know what has to work, and I also think this includes the mayor and the judges, and I think it would be very prudent for us to look at this and go through this process ourselves. So I, I agree that since we are so closely tied to our budget and, and how all of our salaries are done here at the city, that this is something that I, I'm not as comfortable just pushing that to people who, who are not tied to our budget. So I would prefer to, to take this on and this be part of our responsibility, so I would, I would support your, your motion.
Jean?
Well, I have a little history on this. In 1997, we did raise salaries. The mayor at the time was making about $30,000, $40,000 less than the Public Works Department, the Public Works Director, so we went all the way down the list, and we did it. 20 years ago, just to give you perspective, we were getting paychecks of $484 every two weeks. So that's 20 years to where we are now. So I know we need to take a look, and I, like I said, I've been back and forth on this too. But we had a lot of meetings on it, we did not get much, much pushback from the public, it was an election year at that time, and there was, it wasn't seen as that big a deal. But my biggest problem with a salary commission is, once you go down that road and the process starts, and if they give, say they gave us a 20% or 25% pay raise, I don't think that would look good at all. So that's my biggest fear about a salary commission, is it just gets way out of whack. So I, I think we can go over this ourselves and look at it, and come up to a reasonable solution for all that we have to look at, because it is a budget, budget item. So I'm inclined to go along with April and study it further.
Councilmember Roxanne, and then Dan.
But I'd just like to add that the people that uniquely know the ins, the outs, the ups, and the downs of these positions are us, and so, but what also, what would keep us in line in thinking about this is the budget, so I'm in support of April's.
Dan?
I am well aware of the issues that we have when it comes to our budget, and that's, that's the kind of stuff that keeps me up at night in terms of the level of service provision that we have to figure out for the next, going into the next few years, is absolutely, I take that responsibility very seriously. The fundamental question here, however, is who decides the salaries of the nine elected officials for the city of Bellingham? That's the question on the table. And I don't consider it my role to be in the position of determining that, that, the answer to that question. I think if you asked the average person on the street, "Do you think a politician should decide their own salary?", I think the response would be no. And that's my perspective. I think that an outside commission is the best type of body to decide what those salaries are. I don't feel I have the professional capacity to understand what a judge should make, or a mayor, and I don't believe that I should be a, a person that decides what my salary should be, so that, I'm not, I'm not going to be supporting your, your, your motion.
Just one last question.
Jean?
It would be appropriate tonight, you know, I could move third and final, then vote against. We've done that before.
So it's really up to the council, I don't want to interject. I mean, at the, at the end of the day, if you didn't vote third and final, it certainly, you would just have that first and second, it would not be an effective ordinance. The one thing I would ask is that you're clear on what you're referring to the committee? So you, one option is, are you referring the actual question of what your salary should be, and those of the other elected officials, or are you referring to the committee this question of a salary commission? I just want to make sure it's really clear on the record what you're referring to the committee, that's number one. Number two, just remember that when you do, as a council, decide, at least as to your own salaries, it's actually doesn't, wouldn't be effective until after your term is up, so that it, there would be kind of a staggered effect to that when that, so that's how the Constitution deals with the one question that was, the one issue that was raised.
Yep, that, that happened.
So I'll go ahead and take it, Sharon, I'm with, with Dan on this. There's a reason why state law establishes salary commissions, and it's because it's always awkward for people to decide their own salaries, especially when they're public officials paying themselves with public dollars. And it makes it really easy if you have an independent outside group of citizens, which we rely upon for very important decisions, to also rely upon for a decision like this. It just, it's a common sense mechanism used by many other jurisdictions. I think we should institute it as well. I also think it's kind of, you know, awkward that if, if we decide that, you know, someone is underpaid, that doesn't take effect until our terms expire, that could be four years later, whereas a commission is instituted the next budget cycle. That just seems to be, you know, is treating it in a more businesslike fashion rather than the, the backflips you have to do if elected officials vote on themselves. I would ask Councilmember Barker, we have a motion on the table for this afternoon.
Before you go there, before you go there, let me just say, to be fair to this whole thing, I have no idea where Councilman Bornman is on this. We might want to wait to vote on April's, to vote on all of it until he gets back, just to be fair, because we might, you know, we might, you and Dan have made your statement, I don't know where he's at.
Well, we do have a motion on the table right now. I would ask you to restate it, or maybe something else.
Actually, whenever I stated, I think Jean did second, but I was saying that I was going to, I wanted people to know that if they did reject it along with me, then I would be bringing my motion forward. And my motion would be for the council to consider the salaries of the electeds. It's not for us to, again, consider a salary commission, and it would go to the finance committee.
Okay.
To be, to help with the clarity. No, and so it's not a motion, I was just letting, letting the group know that if we do reject it, whenever we do go to vote, I would be happy to bring this motion forward.
Hold or do business at the next meeting.
Well, I think, Peter, is it, I could, I could do it right in that moment of third and final, correct?
Yes, you can. I mean, I think it's, I think what Councilmember Murphy is just referring to is a council practice, and that's for you to decide how you want to approach this particular situation.
Is that where you're at?
Okay, so if there's no objection by the council, we'll consider there's actually no motion on the table at this point.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion, or any further desire to make a motion? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to the next item. The third item is a, so there's no recommendation tonight. When we come to third and final, we'll be free to act on any of the options that were already available to us. The third item is a discussion of the local impact of federal immigration enforcement. Last November, the city council requested its legislative analyst to conduct research on the relation between federal immigration enforcement and city policies and practices. That research indicates that many local governments are limiting their interaction with federal immigration enforcement for a number of reasons, including participating in federal enforcement activities depletes local law enforcement resources, and that courts have repeatedly ruled that detaining persons outside the authority of adjudicated warrants may subject local authorities to legal liability, and that participating in civil immigration enforcement can erode the communication with local residents that is necessary for investigating local crimes. We're going to hear a very brief presentation by Mr. Mark Gardner, our policy analyst, and then we'll hear from the administration, Mayor Kelly.
Good afternoon, council. Mark Gardner, Legislative Analyst for the city council. I have a very short PowerPoint presentation providing some, just a very brief overview, kind of an extraction of a Q and A document that's in your packet. That document has some depth, but is actually a work in progress, and we'll continue to develop that as needed. If you have additional questions, I can add to it, and, and so it's, it's the first cut of the big picture of this topic. But I just wanted to briefly provide an overview of this issue for you. And in a general sense, immigration enforcement is a federal area of responsibility. It's anchored in the Constitution, it's not necessarily state or local responsibility. Tenth Amendment court cases have resulted in some jurisprudence to what has been called the anti-commandeering set of documents, which means that there is limited federal authority to direct the regulatory actions of local governments. I'm sure there's exceptions to this, but this is one area where people are seeing, seeing this doctrine apply. The federal government can regulate states as organizations, but they can't necessarily require states to carry out federal enforcement. So that's important, legal backdrop to this issue. There is a federal program that, effectually known as the 287G program, I don't know its actual common name, if it has one or not, but encourages localities to proactively participate in immigration enforcement. There are a few additional ways that localities can contractually participate in enforcement, but if you look at the record, less than 1% of jurisdictions nationwide actually participate formally in these programs. And in a general view of counties, but also applies, I think mostly to cities as well, most jurisdictions have a passive approach to this area. They don't have a lot of things that really regulate what they do, but they do respond to federal requests. So that's, at this moment, the majority of jurisdictions. However, there's a growing trend towards jurisdictions limiting response to immigration and customs, customs enforcement requests, and there's a number of reasons for this. First, courts have ruled that detaining people longer than necessary could lead to violations of Fourth Amendment rights, and there have been some adjudicated cases, local governments have been, had to pay some fines or some, some damages for, for this. And the second point is that local law enforcement, if it's seen as an extension of federal authority, it erodes resident confidence and willingness to cooperate with local law enforcement. And so it really goes against the idea of community policing and trust in government and in, in law enforcement. Another reason is that enforcing immigration law depletes resources that would otherwise go into local law enforcement. And lastly, helping to enforce civil immigration law directly by local governments can lead to pretextual policing and a risk of racial profiling. So those are some of the reasons there's been, there's been a trend away from wanting to directly participate in federal enforcement. Just getting into a little bit of specifics, there's a growing number of jurisdictions, around 600, it's changing day by day, this is a fast-moving issue, but they are declining to honor detainer requests from, from ICE, which is a request to place a hold on an individual after they've finished adjudicating or being processed through their own local criminal institutions. And jurisdictions are increasingly requiring a court-ordered document indicating probable cause, and this is in part because of the Fourth Amendment issues. Right now, currently neither Bellingham nor Wacom County will hold someone in custody if they receive an ICE detainer request that is not backed by a judicially produced legal document demonstrating probable cause. Bellingham goes a step further, and importantly, also prohibits routine inquiries regarding immigration status by law enforcement during routine policing activities. immigration status by law enforcement during routine policing activities. And just to indicate, as you know, there's a lot of activity on this issue nationwide. There's additional things that some localities have done or are in the process of doing. One is that some localities have declared that no local resources can be expended on civil immigration enforcement matters. It's possibly implied by Bellingham's existing policies that we don't do this, but it's not stated explicitly. Another option that cities are doing is making symbolic declarations of support for immigrant communities, such as calling their set of policies and practices a sanctuary city or a Fourth Amendment city or a welcoming city. There's more terms. This is just a symbolic representation of what's underneath those policies to protect immigrant communities. A couple of other examples of actions by local governments include helping to locate or provide access to legal resources, and this is quite important, that anybody really has the proper legal resources at their disposal to understand these issues, particularly in cases where things can happen very fast. So this is something that a number of cities have done. And it's just another example in our part of the world. Seattle has sponsored a family unity project to assist the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrival DACA children and young adults and their families in understanding legal issues and their rights in general and to provide counseling and assistance. So those are just some additional things that some localities have done that is, in addition to Fourth Amendment and other legal reasons to back off from being essentially having your local law enforcement be federalized on this issue. So those are just some examples. And I have one bit of good news. As of 12:55 PM today, there was no executive order regarding immigration coming out from the new administration, but I will be monitoring this day by day, so that could change very quickly. And that's just a quick overview of some of the themes in the Q and A, and I can answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions for Mark right now on the Q and A? Dan?
Just more comment, I guess, if that's appropriate. Just to expand on the earlier slides in the beginning that talked about various amendments. So I just want to make it clear that every person in our country, regardless of immigration status, is afforded fundamental rights of due process with the Fourteenth Amendment and protection against search and seizure because of the Fourth Amendment. And there's no, there's no question this applies to all people in the United States, whether citizen or not. Supreme Court ruled in Almeda Sanchez versus the United States in 1973 that all criminal charge-related elements of the Constitution's amendments, so that'd be the First, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, and Fourteenth, such as search and seizure, self-incrimination, trial by jury, and due process, protect non-citizens legally or illegally present. And illegally present's not my language I'm quoting here. More recently, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled in Zadvidis versus Davis in 2001 that due process of the Fourteenth Amendment applied to all people in the United States whose presence is maybe unlawful, involuntary, or transitory, and that's a Supreme Court ruling. So I just wanted to add those pieces into the public record.
Thank you, Dan. Any other questions for Mark? Okay, Mayor Kelly.
Well, first of all, my comments are more on a personal level. Thank you, Mark, for your analysis. I appreciate seeing clearly in writing what our policy is in the city. I support our policy 100% and believe that it's completely justifiable based on both our community principles and, and the support for equity in our community. And having said that, I personally worked on a bipartisan piece of legislation that allowed children that were not, that were undocumented to get in-state tuition at the state level. And so it was very moving to me when people, the students came from our institutions of higher learning with concerns about being sent away. And after I heard some of the testimony from our attorney generals back in Washington, D.C., and read in the newspaper how even some of the executive orders that had been withdrawn already or signed could ultimately lead to our dreamers being sent back and not allowed access to public education with everybody else, because they've been good students, they worked hard, and we thought they deserved to have access to schools. I am, I would be very open to whatever the council wants to do on the symbolic level. That, to me, is, of course, important, but I'm even more concerned that we maintain the position we've taken on the actual implementation of protecting people's rights when they lived in our, live in our community. So it's, you know, for me, it's up to the council what term, you know, we'd like to say we are, because the truth is, we are. So I'm very happy with our community and our city government that we've actually adopted policies that protect people.
Dan, again?
So to that, to the mayor's point, I'm going to make a motion to direct city staff to create a council action addressing civil and criminal federal immigration law and to deliver a draft of this work product to council's first meeting in February. And further, as part of this motion, I'm requesting that up to three council members work with city staff in producing this document.
Second.
Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
We have a second? Okay, so the motion before us briefly is to ask staff to form a council action. What it may be is yet to be decided on federal immigration policy. And could you state that last part or the middle part, really?
To deliver a draft of this work product to council's first meeting in February. And as part of this motion, I'm requesting that up to three council members work with city staff in producing this draft document.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Kelly. I'm writing.
You're right there. And I'm assuming that we're talking about putting together a work group like we have on many other issues, where you guys identify who you would like to have work with staff, and then we review things as we have on many other, many other issues. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I appreciate moving forward, but I'm not so sure that we've actually expressed exactly what we want out of this work product yet. Not everyone's had a chance to speak. I mean, I guess I'd like to speak to the issue. I believe of an absolute commitment under the Constitution, as Dan outlined, to protect the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment rights. That's the right from unreasonable search and seizure and arrest without probable cause and a duly, you know, enacted warrant. That's pretty darn important, as well as all due process considerations. So that's kind of a bedrock thing. And then kind of more locally, what we've already done is our police policy is very clear that the reason why we don't get involved in deputizing and carrying out federal immigration policy is that our police officers can be trusted to do their primary responsibility, which is reinforce public safety here within our city limits. So I think we've struck that balance pretty well already, and so I'm not sure what this document does. Perhaps it does what Kelly was suggesting, is that maybe we need to move beyond that to what I guess you call the symbolic act, what I would call a symbolic reaffirmation of those commitments. I think a lot of people are feeling threatened. They're wondering if the city of Bellingham isn't part of that threat, and I think we'd like to make it clear that we're not part of that threat. I think sometimes the community may still see us as part of the threat, and I don't know if they'll be reassured with a symbolic reaffirmation, but I think we can at least go that far. And the question is, do we want to go any further? Are there any other incremental changes we can make that keep us on this side of federal law? Don't get us into trouble, but maybe go a little bit further to carrying out that, you know, reaffirmation to make this a safe community?
Well, and I think that can be direction from the council to what we're doing in the work group.
Roxanne?
If there's exactly what you expect out of the work group.
Roxanne?
Well, I feel like our city, you know, let me just say, this issue is super near and dear to my heart, especially as a tribal member who was treated so adversely by this country, and seeing that disproportionately continuing to happen throughout our country is so concerning to me about who belongs here, who doesn't, who our indigenous people are and the way that we need to support them. So the way that I feel it goes in our city is, I don't think people here yet understand enough that we are a sanctuary. And so maybe it is just the simple thing that we need to do to explain through this committee, you know, what protections we do have, and to help people understand that, yes, indeed, we do provide the sanctuary protections that the people are already asking us for.
And I'm sorry, Pinky, I should have recognized you earlier. Pinky, and then Gene.
So a couple thoughts on this. One is, I think it is really important that we are clear with the public that we are doing all of these things, and your report states that, but I think that's something we should do in regards to communication and advocacy out in the community. And if we choose to use a symbolic term and we move towards saying we're a sanctuary city, I'm definitely open to that. I also think we should consider what the implications are, if we're going to lose any funding or all of those things. So I think that we have to be prudent in looking at what all the effects might be. But I think that this is our constitutional and civil rights, and it's important for us to stand up for these things. And we can't live in fear or have our constituents live in fear for the things that might happen to them, and also for us, making our decisions based out of fear of what might happen to the city. That's not fair either. So if we go through this process and are able to explore all of those things and communicate with the public with what we're already doing and come up with a symbolic term we're all good with, I can, I can definitely support that.
Gene? I agree with everything everybody said, but I would caution, I would hope that we could come up with our own name that reflects Bellingham. This is a very welcoming community. Everywhere I go, people that I talk to that have just moved here, my God, everybody's so nice here. Everybody treats everybody. Now, decades and decades and decades ago, it wasn't that way, but we are now. All you have to do is walk around the city, and you can see that. So whatever we can come up with to reaffirm what we're doing and put every language in there we want to, but let's, let's see if we can find a Bellingham title for this, and I think that'll go a long way. Councilor Barker?
So my understanding with the motion is, it's not specifically saying either a resolution or an ordinance, and I think those are both things that we need to consider.
Council action.
Yeah, I, I, we've had, we've had a suggestion of an ordinance come through, keeping Bellingham families at work. We've also had three particular things, and I think we'll see people this evening coming from the Blue Group that they wanted us to consider. So I think the group, it would be a very unique opportunity to really work with not only staff and ourselves, but the very people that we're trying to make sure we're communicating with, that we're with you, we got you. But I think sometimes when we get into those groups, we're working behind walls and people aren't quite sure what we're doing and who we're being informed by. So I lean more toward an ordinance, and I think the reason why an ordinance would be important, and we can discuss this in the work group, but it's, there's a chance that federal policy could change. And if we just have a resolution and federal policy changes, the resolution's just words. If we have an ordinance and federal policy changes, we ought to come back to that ordinance, and it needs to be a public process with the community to let them know why we're changing that ordinance. And so I think it's an educational opportunity if federal, federal regulations change. And I, and I would like to serve on that committee, and I, of course, seconded it, and I would support that, but I, I would like us to certainly take into all the comments that we've had through the public. Also, I think when we get through this, I did have some questions for, we have some police department members. Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I have questions also for the police later on, but Councilor Hamel?
My inclination is towards an ordinance as well, but I did want to keep it open. That's why I'm directing council action, because I don't know fully the implications of resolution versus ordinance, but I do, I do agree with you, Councilmember Barker, that that's, that's probably the better way to go. My interests are in protecting people who are in the programs of the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, the Deferred Action for Parents of Americans, and others with unresolved immigration, civil immigration issues. That's one giant category. The other piece is that I want to, what happened in November on Telegraph Road was a horrible incident involving human sex trafficking with, and I don't know completely the immigration status of the women that were victimized in this process or the people that owned this business, but what I, I don't, what I don't want to do is I don't want to prevent our law enforcement, Bellingham PD, from working with federal law enforcement agencies on human trafficking. I think that we can all agree that we don't want people to be victimized in our community. So I, so I want to find a way through to do that, but I want to protect the DACA and DAPA individuals and the, and others with unresolved civil immigration issues. I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Well, I agree with what you're saying, that it's important we find a way through, you know, even, there are many communities which have already declared themselves sanctuary cities, but to my best understanding, in no case are there exceptions given for anyone who's accused or arrested for a crime. This is not about sheltering any criminals from prosecution. It really is about not actively using local law enforcement to enforce these, you know, civil federal regulations. And you raise a really excellent point. Sometimes it's important to protect people that we have cooperation with immigration services and local law enforcement. In those positive instances, we would want to still allow that. Is there any further discussion on the motion? So the motion is to have staff work with up to three, three city council members to develop a council action product to address this issue of the city's policies and practices and maybe law changes with regard to how we deal with federal immigration policy. Does that seem clear enough? All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 6-0, one absence. I would like to do one more order of business, then go to questions, maybe for the police. The order of businesses, which three council members?
Well, you got Dan and April already. You only need one more.
Dan, April, and?
Terry might be interested.
I thought Terry might be interested, and I wanted to leave it open for that.
Okay, is it okay if we appoint those two at this point?
It's nice to appoint people when they're not here either.
I think we should.
Terry's going to do it, no problem.
Okay, so we've appointed two of the three members, the third member to be determined at a later date. So are there any other questions? I know I have some. Parker, April Parker?
Thank you for coming. You know, as, as this became more and more clear, after attending an event at one of the schools, directly after the vote was, I don't even know how to say it, the presidency was chosen. It, I, I knew that there was concern, but going to that meeting and seeing a packed house of people just coming in to understand what their basic rights were and how they were going to be treated in Bellingham, it was, it was very impactful. Teaching in the public schools as well. Gosh, I'm so sorry. The children were confused, and our, our, our media has done a very huge disservice to our children. They're, they're very confused, and adults have done a disservice as well in understanding what rights they have here. Recently, I attended the, Wacom Cooney College had a celebration for Martin Luther King, and there was a really great breakout session, really trying to help people understand immigration law, because that's the other total confusion. My understanding is, you know, we have this path of DACA, and most people don't even understand what that means. That, that's not a path to citizenship. That's just saying, you got brought here, you were a minor. Jeez, council member crying. And I won't put away the evidence. The, we're going to now give you a right to be able to work and, but it's not, it's not a path to citizenship. And if you came here, if you were brought here as a minor after 2007, you don't even get that. So you're just here, and that's 2007. Somebody could have been brought here at six months old after 2007. They're nearly 10 now in our community. It's nothing that we can change at a federal level, but it's certainly something that we need to make very clear. I do, I have a lot of friends within the police department, and I have to say in commending them that I called many of them up when this came up, because I really wanted to make sure that as we move forward this, it's with our police officers. And it was so interesting and very supportive that each, each police officer that I spoke with said, oh, absolutely, like, we already do those things. The biggest concern was, just make sure people understand that I'm not responding to Alderwood calls, I'm not responding necessarily to Geneva calls, I'm not responding to, you know, to the northern cities. And, and so don't, don't, I'm wanting to really make sure that people didn't have false expectations outside of this city, and people that have a Bellingham address. And so, but I did, I did find that very encouraging, that there was certainly support in, in making those affirmations, but also to ensure that people are very clear on what that means we can and can't do. So I- we can and can't do. So I thought that was great. I think what would be helpful, because I doubt many people have read through 417, our immigration policies, that distinction of civil and criminal, where we're already at. I also recently forwarded to the council, and I couldn't maybe put it on my blog post as well, but I've been talking with people who work inside human trafficking as advocates, and it's exactly what Dan was talking about. There's, there are people out there that, that really need our help, in making sure we are communicating with Border Patrol, Homeland Security, ICE. And therefore, I do realize that some communities have come to us and said, we don't want you to have any communication and no funding, but we would be doing a huge disservice to this community and to those people who are being victimized if we were to do that. So therefore, I thought you might be able to help educate the community, because we are going to be moving forward into this group on kind of where, where the Police Department currently stands on those two things.
Certainly, I can do that. My name's David Dahl, I'm the Deputy Chief with the Police Department. And I have in front of me Policy 417 that you speak of, which is titled Immigration Violations. And I think that it's important for people to know that the founding statement of this policy includes words such as "equal enforcement under the law," it includes words such as "all individuals regardless of their immigration status must feel secure," that contacting or being addressed by members of law enforcement will not automatically lead to immigration inquiry. We do not enforce civil immigration law. Now, the difference between civil and criminal immigration law can be a little bit fuzzy, which is why we do not enforce immigration law by policy. Now, when you get to issues such as what Councilman Hamel said about human trafficking, yes, we would like to, and thank you for to coordinate with our federal partners, to ensure that the victims of immigration violations, that people who are being human trafficked, can have the resources to them to get some help. We also participate in a U visa program where the Chief of Police talks with people who are witnesses or victims of crime, and helps them through a U visa to stay in this country, for fear of being sent home, or for, just for their own protection as well. So as a, as a policy, we don't do that. And I look back about the last 10 years of our practice, and I could tell you that I found cases where, for instance, we were contacted by ICE or Border Patrol, saying, could you please go to this location and serve a search warrant for us? Our answer has been no. Or, we have a certain person who stopped, and we get a call from Customs and Border Protection, can you hold that individual for us because of a potential immigration violation? We say, no. I've got documentation of that in our, in our history. So we look forward, in fact, Councilperson Barker, I have a, I have reached out to the Blue Group to meet with them. We're looking forward to talking to this committee that's going to be formed, and to all of our stakeholders, to find out how we can better address our communication of what we do, whether it's, and we're looking at this policy right now. I was just with Chief Cook for some time last week, saying, can we make this policy a little more clear, to completely take away some of the ambiguity? And we're working with City Legal on that, so this is a work in progress. So, you know, the bottom line for us is, people need to feel that they can call 911 when they're, when they're, when they need us. Don't care what their immigration status is. We care to give you help and service when you need it. That's the bottom line for us. It's in our policy, and it's in our practice.
Thank you, Deputy Dahl. I think that was the best way to sum up what our obligation is as city government and as Bellingham Police. I'm most appreciative of the fact that the people and the leadership of the Bellingham Police Department is committed to nurturing trust with our community, that the Bellingham Police Department feels it is part of our community. That's most important to me. And so I'm going to ask kind of a difficult question, because it's kind of a question in the negative, because I've heard some concerns from the public, that they're wondering, what does Bellingham Police Department do with regard to profiling? What does the Bellingham Police Department do with regard to stop and frisk procedures? Can you tell us what our practice and policies and rules are, and if there are violations of those practice policies, how does the Police Department handle that?
Well, you're talking about two different things. Racial bias policing or profiling, what's called racial profiling. You'll know that every commissioned officer in our organization just went through fair and impartial policing. In fact, the mayor went through the course with us. Deputy Chief Simon and I went through four days of instruction, and actually became train the trainers for our organization. And when the people who teach that course came to our organization and looked at our policy, they said, you know, your policy is more strict than it needs to be. We have what's called a suspect-specific policy when it comes to using ethnicity to describe an individual, has to be specifically related to a crime. They said, you know, you can be a little broader than that, if you wanted to. And our response was, well, we might consider that, but it's going to depend upon what our community members, what our stakeholders, and how they feel about that. But right now, we have a policy that is, not only opposes racial profiling, but biased-based policing that covers every group, quite frankly. You can't use characteristics of a certain group to decide whether or not you're going to commit law enforcement on them. The concept of a stop and frisk regards reasonable suspicion that an individual has a weapon. I mean, that's the elements of stop and frisk, and you need to have, to have that reasonable suspicion to do that. If we see somebody walking down the street, it's not an issue of stopping and frisking them. It's an issue of whether or not we have reasonable suspicion as to whether that individual is armed. So I know that that has been a policy that has been up for debate all throughout our country, that we have one of the most clear and strict policies regarding how we do those field interviews, or field what you call stop and frisk.
So it sounds like on paper, we're very good. Can you tell me how it's implemented, and how it's, how it's policed in a certain sense, that our officers are following those policies?
Well, having a good policy is one thing, training on it is another, and having the supervisors that are watching over that training is still yet another thing. And so with the fair and impartial policing, for instance, not only did our commissioned officers go through the basic course of this is what, this is what implicit bias is, and if any of you have a couple hours, I'd be more than happy to sit with you and talk about that issue or that concept. But then, we also have a supervisory course that our supervisors went through, to talk about the importance of how you supervise your personnel as it relates to fair and impartial policing. In regards to stop and frisk, or in regards to searching, which requires probable cause, we train on that throughout the year with our friends in legal, through classroom, through actual mock scenes, I guess, as you would say, throughout the year. So it's having policies, one thing, doing the training is another. Thank you.
I could tell your mouth was kind of...
And then having the appropriate supervision is the third. I talk a lot at home, just ask my wife, she'll tell you, but my mouth doesn't dry up like this.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Jean?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, Michael, I think tonight, with the crowd we probably expect, it might be good for you to move up the report on the action we took a little while ago, on the committee we formed, and which way we're headed with that.
Do you counsel feel about that?
I think that's a good idea.
At what, should I state?
Right after, once we get past roll call, and before you go to 15-minute public comment period, just announce what we've done.
Is that the way of the council?
I think that might help people feel a little bit better. And then secondly, hearing from Deputy Chief Dahl just reaffirms what I've always said, we've got the best Police Department areas. And thank you for coming, David, and thank all of, all of your people you work with. People in Bellingham need to know, we have the best, and that's it. So.
Thank you. I will say that at the march on Saturday, the feedback I got back from my officers who were there was the high fives, the hugs, the thank yous we got from so many people, and that's so empowering to my officers, that we just really truly appreciate that support.
You know, I've seen that too. I said thank you to one of our police officers going by, and I think many of our communities do feel that trusting relationship, the mutual trusting relationship. I think the concern is that not everyone in our community feels that mutual trusting relationship, and I personally would like to see us move further towards that, as we thread this needle of supporting people's legal rights, but not ourselves, you know, running foul of federal laws, or entering kind of a, an active and resistance, which may or may not be the course we choose. I think that's yet to be decided. So any further discussion on this topic? April?
I'm looking forward to it, and I'm glad that you responded to the Blue Group. And I think there's definitely other partners in this community that, again, will be learning with and alongside, because it is a community that none of us can represent, none of us can even begin to understand the situations that they fled, why they're here, and how they perceive things to be here in Bellingham. So I'm really looking forward to this, and I hope we use it as an opportunity to really bridge, make some, build some bridges, maybe mend some old wounds, and then move forward with really clear intentions of what we're doing. And for those people that are concerned about if federal law were to change, and funding could be, could change as well, I think that, again, is why the ordinance would be important, because we, we, I think we're all in agreement that we don't want to go against state or federal law at this point. If things do change, then that's a decision that this council and this, this community would have to make. So I hope there's no tension between those communities there. I think it's a, an age-old way of keeping power in one place, to turn minority groups and disenfranchised groups against each other. And that's certainly not the intent. We, I think we've been very clear that for those people who are being trafficked, for, for those that are undocumented for whatever reason, and of course, for those that are dependent on federal funding for what they do, we're going to be very sensitive to all of those issues.
Any further discussion? Okay, Mark, thank you very much for your background paper. I think it's important that people understand the finer points that we're having to struggle with. Deputy Dahl, I appreciate you being here as well. Deputy Chief Dahl. We'll go ahead and bring that to an end. We'll go on with our council hall. We have one set of minutes to approve. This is for January 9th Committee Meeting Minutes.
Move approval, second.
Motion. Any further discussion or changes? All those in favor approving the meeting minutes from January 9th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll now move on to old and new. I'd actually like to start with a thank you to Ms. Samantha Wolfall, who is our Bellingham Herald reporter who will be moving on. I, yeah, I really hope that we get another...
We drove her out of town.
Yeah, another reporter who is as committed as Sam has been. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Hold your new business. I see Dan, and then April, and, Dan, go ahead.
Okay. I'm going to try to make this as brief as possible. This is an update on the Grace Program. This is the ground-level response and engaged coordination program. So the purpose of this briefing today is to outline to council a planning project that's being carried out by a team convened by the Waukun County Health Department, and to provide some summary background, and I'll do this rather quickly here. So the city of Bellingham, Peace Health St. Joseph's Medical Center and County Health Department are each contributing $2,500 to support a three-to-four month county-wide visioning process focused on improving services for people who have complex psychosocial needs, and who are in need of crisis intervention, stabilization, and recovery services. And many of these individuals have one or more of the following conditions that make their cases complex: homelessness, psychiatric impairment, chronic medical illness, substance use problems, and other challenges. Oftentimes, these individuals are, that we receive services from multiple agencies and government entities, and this results in a lack of informed information exchange and probable duplication and inefficiencies. The purpose of this project is to develop a set of recommendations to increase public safety, reduce excessive use and cost to emergency and criminal justice systems, and improve the health and well-being of individuals with complex needs. Our objectives are appropriate, increasing appropriate and effective use of crisis services and law enforcement, increasing engagement with treatment and supportive services, increasing treatment compliance, increasing effective deployment of limited resources, decreasing unnecessary emergency department visits and EMS calls, decreasing law enforcement contacts, jail bookings, and jail days. I've been meeting with this, the planning team, by the way, consists of Ann Deacon, who's manager of Waukun County Human Services, Greg Winter from the Opportunity Council, Chris Phillips from Peace Health St. Joseph Medical Center, Tara Sundin from the city, and Mark Gardner, our policy analyst, Carol Gibson, the executive director of Waha, and myself. We've been mapping out what our current resources are, and where the gaps are in these resources, to try to get to some level of understanding where we can apply this program to help individuals. And I should just preface, or I guess too late to preface, but I should address that this, this is for chronic high utilizers of systems. So these are folks that are in the emergency department too often, and using it in the wrong way. They're in jail too many times, or they're being contacted by our law enforcement and our, our fire department. So it's really to decrease those contacts, and to have those systems freed up for more appropriate uses for other individuals. We, we are nearing the end of our planning period, and we are, we will have a forum later this spring with community stakeholders. And the reason this is coming up under old, or old and new is because this morning, the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force approved this and gave it its green light, basically. So I just wanted to bring this up to let you know that we are working on this. This is one step outside of the Incarceration Task Force, but it's an important program that can address real serious issues for folks. We want their, their health to be better, we want victim crime to go down, and we want our, our systems to not be as impacted as much. That's, that's my briefing.
Thank you. That's very important information. April?
So this goes along with what we were recently talking about. As I attended the Waukun Community College, the event over there for Martin Luther King, I attended, I think I already said, a breakout session talking about federal immigration law, and it was clear from the constituency there that they want to understand more about that. There's a UW attorney, immigration attorney, that may be interested in coming to talk to council. There's also a local attorney, and I think it would be really beneficial, especially in our next, because we're going to be bringing something forward in February, to have a 15-minute, just briefing, real, real high level of, why is it, why would you have somebody in your community for 20 years, and they haven't achieved documented status? What are some of these roadblocks, and what, how is this system set up, and why would we want to go and make a statement in regards to this particular community? So I make a motion that we work with the president to find the appropriate person to come, and give a 15-minute presentation to council in our next, our next session on federal immigration law.
Second. So the motion is second. This is to schedule a 15-minute presentation on sort of like the, the legal system that people face when they're charting, obtaining citizenship. And I think that when you were talking about this, you were imagining that this would actually be in coordination with maybe a more public event, not hosted by the city council, that people would be invited to. The actual information might be at a different event, and we'd just be having a briefing that would be televised, and therefore maybe have broader dissemination.
Yeah, and working with several different organizations who potentially have a larger event that people could come to, that'd be far more informed than just a 15-minute glossing. But I think at least this would be something for the general public to understand.
Okay, the motion is for approximately a 15-minute presentation on the topic of immigration law and citizenship. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor of bringing, of scheduling time at a future meeting for that event, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 6-0 with one excused absence. Next is Pinky.
Two quick things. So I'm sure everybody's aware that we had our Women's March in Bellingham on Saturday, and I've heard estimated attendance of 12,000 people, which I think is unreal. I thought if we had 1,000, we would be, that would be impressive. So it was a really great opportunity, and I had an opportunity to say something about a call to action for people, and I want to reiterate that here, is that every year is an election year, run for positions. And also, at the city, we have 15 boards and commissions, and we have 31 positions open. So I'm asking people to go to our website, or contact Marie, and she can help you out with that, but for people to actually step up for those positions. And in saying that, the Bellingham Police Department also just put out a new notice. They made an organization called the Bellingham Neighbors Together. It's a volunteer citizen organization committed to visible public presence to reduce crime, educate residents, and promote safe neighborhoods. So the Police Department is inviting neighbors to partner on community safety, and you can go to the website at cob.org, and you can find that connected to the police link as well. So step up, become involved. Thanks.
Thank you. I want to say that there are several of us who were there this Saturday. It was... It was democracy in action. I was very proud to see that it was peaceful. Some of the signs were a little bit wacky, but that's okay. That's democracy too. I think the most important message, though, is that that many people decided to contribute to the public process with a political demonstration, as protected by our constitution, the right to peaceful assembly. And that's exactly what happened, and I was happy to be there. Roxanne?
I'll join the chorus in expressing massive appreciation for the women's event. I just think it was the exact thing that 12,000 of us really needed. And just one more thing. Today, I'm wearing a cedar rose, and that is with great intention, because on January 22nd, 1855, that is when so many different Coast Salish leaders traveled to current day, Mukhltio, and signed the Point Elliott Treaty. So, this is the day that many tribes use to honor and to pay respect for the Point Elliott Treaty. And so, at our next council meeting, I'll be bringing forth a very simple resolution to ask our city to announce that every day on this year.
That's great.
Okay, we'll look forward to that resolution.
Thanks.
Anything else under old and new?
One.
April?
This one's really simple. You can pass that down. So, in looking at our guidelines for public comment period and public hearings, number two, the second sentence says, "Citizens may not sign up on behalf of others." I think the intention wasn't citizens, like if you have documentation, but I think since we're having these conversations, it's important that we're very precise in our language. So, I just move that we amend the, the guidelines for public comment that are, that also exist in Exhibit A of Resolution 2, 2014-25, to say persons may not sign up on behalf of others.
Second?
We have a motion in a second to request that we change our guidelines to say persons or people rather than citizens. Peter, procedurally, is anything we need to do, because it's also embodied in a resolution?
No. So, the idea of the procedures documented in the guidelines, you know, we pulled those together and adopted that by a resolution, I don't know, maybe about three years ago. We pulled together parts from different motions and a resolution here. So, as long as it's understood with this motion that that change be made, I think it's implied that we can, we don't need to redo the resolution, because this is all internal to the council anyway. So, as long as the council understands that.
So, the motion is to revise the guidelines with that language change from citizens to people or persons, whatever reads best? Any further discussion on this? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That also passes 6-0 with one excused absence. I have one more item. It has to do with the Bellingham flag. I think I was on record saying that I want the flag to become so popular that the city council has no choice but to bend to public will. I'm serious about that. I really prefer it coming from the bottom up. But there has been some question raised as to whether or not we've really asked enough people, and there's been enough of a process. There was a pretty big process run by the downtown partnership, but that's not the whole city. So, one suggestion, at, at very little cost, we ask our council staff members to put out some kind of an online survey that we then broadcast and seek some feedback on whether people like this flag or want to go through a process to maybe look at other candidates.
Sure.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Since it was my idea, I, I definitely...
Beer came from somewhere.
Hey, once you're president, you have no more ideas. That's it.
I definitely support it, and I think that we should put it out to the community, because there has been concern that we are not following an official process, and that was my concern. If we could address that with the public, that this has not gone through an official process, but the public is okay with that, if we can get their input, then I would feel comfortable in moving forward on it becoming an official flag with their permission.
Second? So, we have a motion in a second to ask our staff to develop some kind of an online survey, which then will be broadly publicized to get feedback from the public on how they feel about adopting this flag with a given process or going through some other kind of process. Like I said, I kind of like the guerrilla unofficial aspect of it, but an online survey is guerrilla enough for me. Any further discussion? April?
I think we have to, if we really want to get community feedback, if we're really wanting to know if this community wants this, I think an online survey is, again, it's only to the people who might have read the paper and might have seen that thing. I also have been kind of waiting for it to become such a beast that we just can't not do it, and I think that's where the community really starts adopting it on their own. Having been young at one time, I, I know it's more hip to do things that maybe aren't quite the law yet, and so I think that's part of the mystique of having the Bellingham flag in some ways. If we're gonna, if we're gonna come back and say, "We're doing this because we, we went out to the public and have decided that the public really likes this," we need to take a much broader approach if we want to actually go that way, because I don't, I don't think having a survey is necessarily getting out to your entire public.
Gene?
Well, other than a public hearing, which would just bring the massive amounts of people that want the flag, then you're going to get the same thing. So, I just think a first shot at it with a, with a survey and to see what it says. I mean, we're in a situation now where the cat's out the bag. It's out there. You get off a plane, or you walk into the Bellingham Airport, that's the first thing you see. What's that? That's the Bellingham flag. And you go downtown, and you go, it's starting to pop up everywhere. So, I, I was the one that suggested we should have a contest, but it was to be a one-sided contest now. I mean, it's, it's out there now. So, but if we can get, we're not getting very many emails on it. So, I think a survey, see, see what it says.
I, I appreciate the kind of the less formal, formal way we're approaching this. I've said all along, I don't want us to get too official. As you say, the charm, the flag is actually more charming in a sense unofficial. So, the motion is to have our council staff develop an online survey, which, oh, Councilman Hamilton?
I'm curious. Councilmember Murphy indicated that the NOOCSEC nation had given its okay. Do you know, do we know where, where Lummy Nation stands on this?
No, I, I would say that we did get feedback from Brad Lockhart, who did reach out to all of the communities, and he gave us evidence that they do support it. So, but we can look, we can get official evidence from them if you'd like.
Any further topics under old and new? I see Mayor Kelly.
No, I don't have a topic. I was just gonna, I agree with, I kind of agree with April for saying the public wants this. It's obvious the public, that many people in the public really like this. I think you should just adopt it yourselves, because you're not going to be able to say that an informal survey represents 50% of 85,000 people or whatever majority is. So, so I guess without having to go through that, just, I'm happy with it the way it is, but I, but if you wanted to adopt it officially, I'd say either go through an official survey that you can say, "Yes, it's, it is," or just do it if you want to do it.
So, the motion before us is to put out that survey. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4 to 2. Okay. We've run a little bit late. We're now going to go to executive session. Executive session is expected to last 15 minutes. Executive sessions are closed to the public. This is, there will be a report at the regular meeting tonight. There's only one item for the executive session. It's a matter of litigation, Parrott versus the city of Bellingham. I will recess the meeting and reconvene approximately 3:40.